January 10th, 2023, the order. Um, let's go around and introduce ourselves. Uh, Joan Kent, Mayor. I'm Susie Valdo Berry, uh, City Council. Marsha Martin, City Council.
Tim Waters, City Council.
John Creighton, LDDA.
Dan Rodriguez, City Council.
Shakita.
Your turn, PDR, City Council.
Kimberly McKee, Longmont Development Authority.
Joe Farlow, Longmont Development Authority Board Member.
Harold Dominguez, City Manager.
Chris McElbray, LDDA.
Wes Barker with the LDDA.
Tom Royce, City Council.
Can we be invited back here to introduce some stuffs?
Uh, David Warren Barker, City Manager, Office.
Great. Jody Mark, City Manager, himself.
We're all just doing some thing, Manager. Jim Exton, Public Works.
Okay.
Alex.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
One more.
I had an egg roll in my mouth. Now it's tiles also.
UG Mason, Attorney.
Jim Gold, Chief Financial Officer. Appreciate that.
So, welcome to the TDP Board Number.
We're good. I don't think we need to do that. Yes. Go ahead. Everybody's introducing themselves.
I'm John Spleas, so I'm hopeful.
Even more love up there.
All good.
And Sammy Seater, just into the room, Assistant Cindy Coney. Uh, is that your?
Is that a promotion or demotion?
So, all now, City Manager. Sorry, Eugene.
That's all right. I'll do it for you, Sandy.
It's hard topics to be discussed, is it pedestrian access and safety in the downtown area? And I'm gonna turn it over to Chris McElbray.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Mayor Petz, thank you, City Council. Um, you know, uh, obviously, there's a lot on your plate. There's a lot of priorities that we're discussing as a city. So, we really appreciate you taking the time to have a conversation about something urgent and really important to not just our downtown. This is a citywide issue, but um, you all appointed us to serve in this capacity and on the LDDA Board and represent uh, the LDDA. So, we'll be discussing uh, one of our six pillars within our master plan of our downtown, which is uh, connectivity and access. And I just wanna start this conversation by reading um, the cognitive vision um, that we all adopted back in twenty seventeen. Been five years already. Um, access to our downtown is easy, safe, and low stress. Easy, safe, and low stress for people living, working, or visiting by any form of transportation. Understanding that almost every person is a pedestrian at some point in their trip to downtown. We're all pedestrians at some point. And most of you know, I, I work at Front Range Community College. I, I teach there and we're going through this massive change right now. Where we're completely changing our structure, moving from campus space. Right now, we have three campuses, one in Laramore, one in Westminster, and one in uh, Boulder. And we're moving to a one-college model. We have a new president, we're under new leadership. And so, there's a lot of very, very important decisions being made across the college. And one of the things that um, we're, that I'm always reminding myself of as we're going through this massive change is, how has this impacted student? And how is the student experience through this change? Is it improving? Uh, and if it's not, that's, that's a really big problem. And so, I think we all want, keep that in mind as we have this conversation, is, you know, we've experienced adding five hundred uh, new units to our downtown because housing was a, a top priority for us coming out of our master plan in twenty seventeen. We've added a lot. We've done a lot of great things and we've uh, experienced a lot of significant growth. Um, and we also have over a thousand units in the pipeline. So, we're gonna be adding a lot more houses and residents. And so, one thing, you know, as we're experiencing this growth, a big concern is pedestrian and the impact it has had on the safety of our pedestrian. Uh, I don't know if you've had the opportunity of walking through our downtown as of recent and tried to cross the downtown at any point and what that experience feels like. Um, and so, keep that in mind as we have this conversation. And so, um, the goal today, we wanna, we wanna discuss safety. You know, and right now, in our vision, it's easy, safe, and low stress. And as a board, we feel that it's, it's not very easy right now. It's not very safe. Um, and it's definitely quite stressful um, throughout the day. Uh, and so, we wanna discuss our overall philosophy, uh, transportation philosophy as a city and how that is, uh, how that relates to the, the downtown. What are our clear priorities moving forward? Uh, and how do these, how do the projects that we're currently working on in the LDDA align with the city's priorities? Discuss ways that we can, um, ways that we can make real change happen now. Um, we have a lot of different plans. We've got, you know, Longmont two point O, and Vision Longmont, the master plan. And so, uh, what are some real meaningful steps that we can take quickly to address the safety of our community and then dis- discuss funds and next steps? Um, and so, we have a residential advisory board that we created that actually brought up this issue, but we hear, we hear concerns every single day. Kimberly, the board, we hear concerns about the safety of our pedestrians every single day. And sometimes it takes, unfortunately, um, something very tragic to bring this to light. Um, and someone really, um, deared our hearts, um, passed away recently due to uh, traffic. Um, and so, uh, because of that, it prompted, uh, you know, it's always been a priority, you know, in our LDDA master plan and because of, but that really is what brought it, it intensified the, the discussion. Um, you know, we have a unique area that's meant to be pedestrian friendly, bringing our community together, is at the heart of our town and, um, and it's really meant to put people first, um, people above cars. And um, creating spaces for residents and visitors to, to walk, to explore, to feel comfortable, to feel invited. Um, and the traffic is just too fast. And um, and it's uh, poorly timed crosswalks, uh, there's several broken and incomplete sidewalks that are deterrents to the overall success that we've worked so much on over the last five plus years. And as we continue to grow and improve our downtown, taking meaningful steps on these issues is, um, at critical importance. Um, you know, we're going, we're, we're gonna go through uh, some of the issues. Kimberly's gonna walk us through some of our current projects. Um, and that we'd like to have a deeper discussion around the overarching, high-level philosophy of transportation and safety with you all. Can't thank you enough for the collaboration and partnership, um, and again, taking the time to, to have this conversation uh, with us. And Kimberly, I'll go ahead and hand the baton over to you.
Um, just real quickly, I think Chris touched on the pillars of our master plan, uh, to remind folks, uh, their economic vitality, place making, urban design, our creative district, connectivity and access, land use and leadership. We're here today to talk about connectivity and access, although everything is important and really works together, um, of creating an environment where people can live, work, and play downtown. Uh, you can see number five, those are the six overarching principles of all the work that we're looking at. And number five is improving and expanding the infrastructure that ensures downtown is well-connected and easily accessible by multiple transportation modes. And like Chris hammered, hell, really looking at it through that lens of easy, safe, and low stress as we're walking around. Uh, and again, I just wanna reiterate that, that we are our partners in all of this and this community, and we can't be more thankful for the investments that City Council has made in downtown. And we are just here to continue to make it safe and comfortable for all of our residents and visitors. I quickly wanna go through the goals and strategies. Under each of those pillars are particular goals and strategies that were created by the community, by a working group for connectivity that was um, wide uh, reaching of folks from the entire community back in twenty seventeen. Um, the first one is to align those transportation and land use planning efforts, um, to achieve a well-connected downtown. When we look at this, the connections to the Greenway are absolutely essential to our success, as we want to get rid of single-vehicle occupancy and having everyone have to drive here. The Greenway is a gem. It is a fantastic asset, one of the things that we talk about all the time. But it's not super easily connected to downtown. If you wanted to come off, you know, around Main Street, there's not a safe, protective way to get there. So, looking at the continuation of our street grid, um, as well as easy ways to get from the Greenway, and developing easy and effective walking and biking connections from the Greenway and from other parts of downtown. Um, I bike all the time, but I would say I'm a B-minus level, C-level biker, right? And if I get out of my neighborhood and really have to go around, it's not low-stress or comfortable. Um, so how do we get people here easier? Well, we look at enhancing downtown as a central hub of citywide transportation. We all know that, you know, First and Main, you are all actively working on that, and that is gonna be fantastic. But there are many missing linkages around that to get into downtown and to walk around. If there aren't sidewalks or it doesn't look comfortable, we do not want that First and Main Transit Center to be a car hub where we're having a call-carceral, where people are driving there, jumping on, and then driving instead of walking around. So, finishing those things, I think, are essential. Um, encouraging alternate use of transportation modes. And one of the things that we talk a lot about, I talk with Phil all the time, Phil's like on my bat phone, but talking about transportation demand management. And we all know that there will be a construction project here across the street and that we have a lot of concerns around parking. How do we dig deep and say, what are some of these transportation demand management things that we can experiment during this time? And really start to gather information and say, what are, what are residents or visitors willing to do? Would they do a shuttle? Would they park further if we gave them downtown dollars and instead advised them to do so and walk? What are these things? So, I don't have the answers today, but think that that's definitely an opportunity for us to explore. Um, as we look at enhanced bicycle and comfort, um, certainly, our bike infrastructure remains very important as to what we're doing. We did have a, a, a dismount zone. Um, I think that uh, people chose to dismount for a while, but are no longer choosing to dismount and are now just really flying up and down. So, looking at further enforcement of that dismount zone, um, better connections to neighborhoods, and then ensuring an adequate, well, uh, distributed parking supply. Evaluating regularly, we do have a parking study that'll wrap up in January and we'll be able to give you the results of what is that true parking snapshot look like today? Um, and preparing for future needs, I talk with Harold all the time, and we're talking about what are some of these hotspots where people are gonna be living and playing that are new to downtown? And how do we strategically invest in some parking that can, um, can be used in multiple different ways? You know, that's what we did with the Spokane Kaufman. We said, we know that there's people that are working at the county that are coming, but then at night, they're leaving and all that parking is, is available. So, we have that widely open to the public. So, how do we really get the most bang out of our cost per parking? But the number one thing that we have, that we really wanna focus on today is maintaining a safe and enjoyable walking environment for pedestrians of all ages and abilities. And I think that's really important to remember. As we have an aging community, it's gonna get even, um, we're gonna walk a little slower. I know that I walk a little slower than maybe I did in my twenties. Um, and so, that, that's gonna be pretty important to focus on. So, when you look at the goals that we have there, it's things like improving, um, improving pedestrian connectivity, ensuring sidewalks are ADA accessible, um, expand the alleyscape project, ensure that mid-block crossings allow for high-visibility support and encourage building site design that enhances safety, and working with CDOT and the city to have automobile compliance with spoken posted speed limits. So, those are some of the things that are in our, our, our jointly adopted master plan. So, this is some results of a survey that we, that we got, um, about twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one is when we got these. This isn't the whole survey, I've really just pulled out the questions about what we're talking about today. But we asked, what prevents you from visiting downtown? Inadequate parking is something that we have heard probably historically since the first car hit downtown. Um, but traffic issues is something that we have not heard since recently. And that matched the, um, matched what people were saying about parking. So, it was very interesting that it's really starting to come to the forefront. These that you see beneath are things that people typed in. So, I copied and pasted exactly what they typed in, but these were just a smattering. Tons of excessive speed, lots and lots and lots of stuff around speed. Traffic safety, safety and noise are deterrents to visiting and spending time downtown. The highway makes walking and biking difficult, the traction and character. Traffic signals and crossings are not sufficient to keep people safe. Short street crossings for pedestrians, we hear that over and over and over. Um, vehicles are driving too fast and they're too loud, and that, um, Main Street is very busy, making walking scary. This is just a smattering of the things, but that was the really, what we were hearing over and over and over within that survey. The survey was administered through CU Boulder, um, and so, that's how we got these results. We did ask what people like most about downtown. They like community feel, the local businesses and dinings and, and the, um, history and the vibe. Suggestions to improve better and more quiet connectivity, parking and access, that was the overwhelming. More shopping and dining, and then increased gathering space and cleaning it up a bit. And then, what do you dislike most about Long, about downtown? Again, was connectivity, traffic, parking, bike access, pedestrian issues. Not enough choice, then the need for more, um, social services in the community. So, that's what we're hearing as we're asking people about what they think of downtown. In our twenty nineteen parking study, one of the interesting things that they had said was, they saw a bunch of people that would drive from one side of Main Street to the other. And they, some of them are, were working the system, trying not to get a ticket, but they said many of them weren't even in a time slot, right? So, they were just driving during the day from the east side of Main to the west side of Main. And they said, um, in all of their time of doing this, they haven't seen anything that was that high or incredible of people driving from one side to the other. That's a pretty clear sign, maybe, that people don't want to cross the street. Um, it said that traffic was observed to move quickly, and some pedestrian crossings were difficult to navigate in the allotted time. And this was from the people that were collecting the data, who collect data in towns all over, right? So, this was kind of their ob- observations. Um, they said there was difficulty crossing the highway, and they noticed that if you did not start your walk the minute you got the, um, clear walk sign, that you probably wouldn't make it across without. And when you talk about low stress, it's always, you know, you take three steps in and then you get the red countdown, you know, that's not the best kind of stressful. Um, so that was just, I wanted to pull that out because that was right from the report of their observations as they were collecting the data. Um, on paper, I think our downtown looks amazing. We have the mid-block crossings, we have fallouts, we have all of these things for traffic calming. It doesn't feel like the traffic has understood that this is for them to go slower and to call. And so, I just think, um, we've done great work in this, in this realm, but we're just not seeing the traffic calming that we were hoping to see. Some of the things that we have done, um, as a result of our master plan is better lighting. We changed out the lighting in all of our public parking lots and we added the string lights on Main Street. We did hear people saying that it was too dark and maybe they were worried about parking in one area and walking to another. Uh, the board took that very seriously and upgraded all of that lighting. We did initiate the dismount zone. I'm sure some of you that have been on council for a long time know that, that, that has been something that people have wanted. We changed to two-way bikes in the alleyways, um, but we're still not seeing the compliance we would love to see for the dismount zone. Um, we have made investments in parking, the Spokane Kaufman Garage, like I talked about before. And, um, we did, we worked with you all, and you were all fantastic to do the, um, Bigger Heart Stronger Streets, where during COVID, we went down to the one-lane Main Street. And, um, these are a few pictures that we captured, and what I love about these pictures is, man, those are full of the streets and people walking around the streets, and that's the downtown that makes me happy when I see that of all of the people that are using our public space, that are gathering. And some of the things that, um, I knew blew me away, uh, when we did it, that I wasn't expecting, was it did feel easy, safe, and stress-free. Not what I was thinking about. At the time, I was thinking, oh, my gosh, let's save the businesses and let's get people down here to do something. But it was so much quieter. Um, I don't have the data, but I believe I was asking Phil, 'cause I think Tyler was the keeper of the data, but it slowed the traffic down, but I think it's like twenty-four or twenty-four miles an hour, and the speed limit's twenty-five. And so, knowing what that felt like, to have people going the speed limit consistently and always, was much more comfortable. Um, and so, those are the kind of experiments that I think were very helpful into what we're trying to achieve. We've also added a lot of infrastructure for bikes, a lot of different bike racks and things like that. Um, and so, um, and we've commissioned a wayfinding plan that I'll talk about in a second, so. So, here are some projects that are in the works, 'cause I don't want the great work that everyone's doing to go unrecognized. Um, right now, we are, um, we had budgeted, I think, back in twenty nineteen to do some preliminary alley planning. Um, it got kinda kicked down the, the road for a while because of a number of issues, but, uh, we're, we're kicking that off this year to really looking at that two-hundred-block alleys and the six-hundred-block alleys, but especially the two-hundred-block alleys as we're trying to connect with South Main Station and then down into Steam. Having that as a, a pedestrian corridor is super important, and probably not one that's super walkable today. Um, the wayfinding that we did with the city, I think a lot of our parking is maybe hidden. There's maybe some confusion as to is this public parking? Can I park here? How long can I park here? Um, as well as just how do you get around and what is that kind of curated experience? So, that plan is done, and our board has, um, allocated over four hundred thousand dollars to implement that within the downtown area. We'll start to see that in twenty twenty-three. We will be starting with all of the parking ID signs and the parking trailblazer signs to be able to get the community to know where parking is. Um, we're working with the city on a camera project, um, to be installed in the alleys to soon help kind of elevate safety. Our colleagues in Fort Collins said that was a complete game changer for their alleys when they did that, that it really, uh, deterred a lot of the, um, negative activities they were seeing. We talked about our parking study that will be coming out in January, and we can share those results with you. Um, we have been working with, uh, traffic engineering on mid-block crossing lights and having head lights. Um, if you remember, uh, we had a tragic accident on the five-hundred block in twenty twenty-one, um, and it took out that mid-block crossing pole. And so, we have said, hey, let's not just replace it with a pole, let's see if we could replace it with one with the flashing lights. And so, CDOT has been amenable to that, so this summer, we're going to do that. And hopefully, we'll also be doing that at the three-hundred or four-hundred blocks because I feel very strongly that it has to be consistent, so you know, okay, I'm looking for this, and this is where I'm gonna stop. So, that's a great progress. Um, the lights alone maybe aren't, aren't just the answer, but it's a great step forward.
That's like the flashing lights.
Yeah.
And, uh, where hopefully's that area of Boulder, probably correct that.
Yep, exactly. Yeah. I don't know if they'll look exactly like that, I would.
I mean, just a general idea.
Yeah, yeah, exactly that, yeah. Um, Third Avenue improvements, which I can't speak to, but I know that those are coming this year. Um, the First and Main Project, like I talked before, we know that there's a parking garage coming there, there's gonna be great bus transit there, but those connections are essential, making sure that we don't just build it without thinking of how is it gonna connect to everywhere else. Um, Quiet Zones, certainly wanted to have some questions around the Quiet Zones, the timing, when would that be happening? When would that be happening in downtown? What would that look like? Um, so, um, Vision Zero, we have been listening in on your conversations around Vision Zero, think that that's very consistent with the things that we're looking at. We know that a transportation plan is coming. Um, Kaufman Street is something that we've been talking about. Possibly, I might have heard warnings about changing the timing of some of the signals. And I'm not sure if I missed anything else on this list, so as we go into our discussion, we can come back to this. I know there's some questions, I know that there's things that we really like to, you know, the forefront of as they're moving forward. And if I missed anything, I apologize, but I tried to scour through all of the CIP and budget documents to get a good reflection of what's happening in the downtown area.
I forgot to mention Emory Street.
Okay.
Is also a planned connection to the Greenway through downtown, but to the, uh, east side of each, so it might be a little outside the LDDA, but I think it's on your border and it does connect down.
So, those are those connections that we were talking about. Is it, is it just in a plan like in theory we want it, or is it in a plan like it's coming?
It's in our enhanced multi-use corridor plan. Same plan as Kaufman Street, so I forgot to mention that to you earlier, so my apologies.
So, it would happen when Kaufman's connected, or just sometime in the future?
It's, it happens with development, so if development comes in, we'll make the connection of Emory Street down to Boston Avenue.
Are you talking about changing light signals? Is that the timing that you've been talking about, or is it just?
Well, it's, um, so right now, I think it's adaptive signal system, so there's cameras that are looking to say, there's this many cars, and then there's a break in cars. And so, I think maybe that might be changing. Um, we'd love to see changes in the timing, but I don't know if there's any to talk about that. Um, so the next slide, um, you know, we commissioned the wayfinding, and you're kinda see, um, a little glimpse of what that will look like. We do have a test sign right in front of the Spokane Kaufman, if you kind of wanna see. It's not, it's kind of a, um, poor man's version of what we're gonna do, but we wanted to get it up to kind of show that that's public parking and, um, it'll be better, but it's done for real. Um, but you know, one of the things that we also commissioned was a placemaking, um, a placemaking plan. And, you know, these kind of artistic crosswalks are happening all around the country, and they did certainly say, this might be a good way to kind of show, number one, that you're in a creative district, number two, really say, there's pedestrians, and there's pedestrians all over this place. And so, when I'm driving here, it's gonna feel different because it's meant and built to be a pedestrian district. And I know, um, you know, that's what downtowns are about, that you're not in a car, it is very walkable. Um, and so, how do we work together, maybe, to, um, implement some bold pedestrian statements like this to say, you know, Longmont is a place that we encourage you to walk? And, and how do we make sure that it's not only a crosswalk that's clear and understandable, what is the driver, you're supposed to do in this situation? Because, again, we wanna make sure that it's safe for everyone, so. Um, so there was a, uh, CIP that was adopted in the twenty twenty-three budget, um, for the Main Street Corridor Plan. The LDDA Board has committed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three and put, um, and put it on for twenty twenty-four as well. In that CIP, this is all from the very community-driven plan of the Main Street Corridor Plan of how, of things that could help, um, in this area. Improvements of the alleys was on there. Um, median installation in the two-hundred block of Main. If you've noticed, we worked together to raise the median that was in the one-hundred block between She's a Quarter and South Main Station. So, that's raised up the same way as the medians are raised in the three-hundred, four-hundred, five-hundred block. Um, the DDA has budgeted, we, this up here, we'll be planting that to make sure that it's a beautiful gateway. But then, when you go to the two-hundred block, it's kind of like a real fast auto block, it goes way up again, there's no median, there's no nothing, and then you necked back down into the historic part. So, you know, putting that median on, is, is in that CIP. Looking at the mid-block crossings and improvements in the downtown character area, um, which includes also maybe looking at adding a mid-block crossing on the two-hundred block of Main Street, adding those flashing lights, um, finishing the sidewalk connections and fixing those that are in disrepair, super important. And then, speed mitigation. And, you know, in that CIP, it talks about what does going to a one-lane look like in Main Street in that core? How do we slow, slow, um, traffic? But what we wanna make sure is the five hundred thousand dollars that we've put in this CIP, that we're working together with things that, that will be implemented, that are in agreement with the philosophy that we have here for transportation in our communities. We, we are here as partners, we have money on the table to help tackle some of these issues. Um, so I'm gonna turn it back over to Chris for conclusion, and then we can start the discussion.
So, Council, do you have any questions at this point? Marsha.
This is actually for the staff, um, because, um, I'm on the, um, Senior Advisory Board. And, um, I've been there for five years, 'cause I love them so.
Mm-hmm.
And every single year, it used to always be Tyler, and it was, you know, it was, I think Jim and.
Carolyn.
Caroline, thank you. I know Caroline, I do, she's lovely. But every year, we are promised that the crossing times on Main, the locklights, will get longer every year. And I believe that somebody's trying to keep those promises. But what I think there must be is a quality assurance problem. You make a parameter adjustment in the, you know, there's this program, right? That, that calculates, you know, the adaptive light controls and stuff. And what I think is happening is that the adaptive software must be putting it right back where it was before. Because all those old folks say, it's just the same. I measure it with my phone, and it's just the same. So, my question is, after you make those adjustments, do you guys send people out there to measure and make sure that it really is longer after you make the adjustment? 'Cause I'm, I mean, people swear up and down that there's no change. And Susie has said, you say, like, it's, it's, it's not the advisor seniors only, but I, I think you're trying and it isn't happening. So, I just wanted to get that out there.
Appreciate those remarks, Marsha. So, just to summarize what Kimberly just presented, people don't feel safe in the downtown. Um, and we have budgeted funds, over five hundred thousand over the next two years, and so we gotta make sure that these funds are targeted and catchional and providing the right value for us. Um, and we. And we, with all the growth that we're gonna be experiencing, I mentioned we have one thousand units in the pipeline. And so what does our future look like? What does that plan look like to support that growth? And then what are some meaningful short-term tactics that we could deploy that could really make a difference? So we're balancing short-term impact versus the long-term.
So what I've noticed, I'm glad you're gonna be putting in the blinking lights for the walkways, but what I've noticed is that it's very difficult to see if someone's gonna be crossing because there's a car there. And from the sidewalk to the end of the car, how far does that person have to come out so that the driver can see them? So I think that makes it very unsafe for pedestrians. The other thing I've noticed is sometimes trees are hanging down and you can't see the signs. So those are very short-term, immediate things that we could do, I think. I've also had complaints, I forgive me, I don't know where the bus stops are there, but that during snows like this, that who's going to clean those bus stops? That's, that's an argument that people don't wanna walk and keep the buses. They cannot get to the stop. There's too much snow. And that comes from, I think, the snowplows. You know, when they plow, whereas it's hillbilly, it's right up on the, on the sidewalk or in the shelter. So especially with Kaufman Street, you're right across from Roosevelt Park. That's a walkable place for that, for people getting off of the hopboard. So we have to make sure that who's responsible for that? Our TV says, no, I know that street people are too busy. I'm a district. So I think we need to make sure that those places are accessible. So those are just the things I've noticed.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks for that insight. John, Wes, Joe, fellow board members, do you want to give?
Well, really, I mean, that, you know, that first question is sort of what's on my mind is, a starting point is are we, what is our priority? Is it, is it moving automobiles through the community as quickly as we can? Or is it creating a pedestrian-friendly environment downtown? And the answer to that question from my perspective drives a lot of other answers. And unless we're explicit about it and we're all in agreement on it and implicit decisions about that drive a lot of decisions. And so I think really what, what we need to hear from you and understand from you all is philosophically, which is what is the priority? Is it moving automobiles through town or is it making it a pedestrian-friendly area that does feel easy, safe and, and stress-free?
I also think it's a critical type right now when you have an increasing density with housing in the downtown. It's really the time to make these changes.
For me, it's coming on. I'm here for chip.
Thank you. I think the, the simple answer in, in certain ways is that the more driving averse or car averse, as far as moving traffic through town, the more pedestrian-friendly you're going to get. I think anod- anecdotal, you saw that when we had the one lane and it really did bring the speed down and it brought a lot more kind of safe sense of walkability to the downtown, right? And then when we opened it back up, it went back to, you know, a very thick stream of traffic, right? And so the more comments I see from people saying, I don't like driving downtown, is going, well, the more people that don't drive downtown, the more pedestrian-friendly. And to, to expand on that, if I go to downtown Denver, I don't like driving in downtown Denver so much that I will park somewhere, just get out of my car and walk to wherever I'm going, right? Like at that point, I'm like, I'm not even worried about parking within fifty feet of the door I'm trying to go to. I just wanna get out of my car because this is really stressful to drive, Michael. And so, you know, I think that first question is really the proximate, the transportation philosophy. Do we really want to make downtown that traffic averse to promote that kind of walkability and pedestrian safety? And you know, from my perspective, yes, I have all. I remember, you know, cause I'm a native, I guess, Mr. Councilmember McCoy is, some of the very first art walks where nothing was closed off. You're literally just tons of people walking up and down the street and, and traffic just going up and down the street. And that, that felt a little sketchy, you know, as, as we've been able to close off Main Street on occasion, and obviously made it a lot more friendly. And so I think that's going to be, the big challenge here is it is a state highway and I think there's going to be certain warrants and things that C-DOT will require. So to what extent can we push C-DOT to allow us to restrict? I think that's a good question as well. From my point of view, yes, for a strong pedestrian-friendly thriving downtown, we need to make it as unfriendly to cars as possible. As I heard a business owner recently say, I've never seen a car buy dinner or, or buy a dress from a store. I've never seen people do that. So I think that's what we kinda have to worry about as far as that's concerned.
Counselor, my. I think this is maybe for Sandy or Harold because my memory, I mean, I distinctly, after that very high profile and unfortunate traffic death on Third Avenue, we very distinctly as a council expressed our support for moving toward Vision Zero. I don't recollect what the, the degree of officialness that policy ended up having. So can one of you?
Well, I think you directed us to move forward with Vision Zero of which our staff is working to put that together to bring that back to you all.
Sure. So that means that it will, Vision Zero is a big policy. It will inform.
Correct.
Future smaller decisions about what we do. And I think that that is, that's good enough and that is in one way the answer. I also think, and, and this is especially important for downtown, because one of the things for compliance, you know, with a, a less car-centric policy is making it harder to use cars. But the other side of that coin is making it easier not to. And we don't want to pay, to have the downtown merchants pay a penalty in terms of people buying dinners and dresses and stuff like that because it's harder to drive. So I, I, I just want to hear a discussion, I think, about what we do to achieve that balance. And in particular, what we're gonna do during the construction phase for, for the hotel, which needs to become the beloved hotel.
There's a observation for that. You know, when you think about actually a lot of parking that is downtown, now we spoke that people are just learning about in Roosevelt Apartments, there's parking available, all very walkable to downtown. I think the fact that driving is so easy to do downtown that people don't even, that's why they wanna park in front of the place that they are, A, and you know, the parent point, but also then from a pedestrian perspective, because people are, you know, trying to get right in front of where they're starting. It makes Main Street and Kimbark, to a lesser extent, Terry and Kaufman, but the whole those very intimidating streets for pedestrians to cross. And so if, if it was difficult enough that people would walk four blocks, then it's still easy to get downtown. But then once you're downtown, it's, it's walkable. And we actually, I would, I would make a case in the parking site, prove whether I'm right or wrong. We have an abundance of parking. It's just everyone wants to park in the same spot and we're right in front of their store. So it's, you know, we need to create the conditions that they'll use the abundance of parking that was there.
And to your point though, I think the wayfinding initiative should really help.
Yeah. But I, but I do think that starts with this notion of pedestrians first. And I, and I think, you know, that my hope is that you all might consider, you know, what are things that we can do to plant a flag and say that, yes, we are for pedestrians first? And while, you know, I don't want this comment to take us off track, but I think a down payment that you can make is that there's four-way stops at all intersections on Kimbark and Kaufman in the downtown area. And that's a very simple, quick thing that could happen that says, yes, we, we take pedestrians more seriously than cars.
So, I'm, I'm here. The idea here is, I, you know, it's, it's a philosophy that I think you guys are really, you know, hitting on here. And I think it's a, it's a good way of, of approaching it all. I think you have a well-thought-out plan here in general. And of course, we do have to focus on parking. We do have to focus. And I hadn't thought of John's point there, putting on Kaufman and Kimbark, all those stop sites. But again, that's, that's a excellent way of, of making it more pedestrian-centric. And again, looking at where, where do we wanna go? If we had success with necking the, the Main Street down to, to one lane, what's that look like? How do we get to there? And at some point, because if that's, if that's what we're, you know, we've got these, these ideas that you said about making it to where people kind of understand that they're, you know, this is an art district and everything and this is a, a place where you can come and, and have dinner and, and do a variety of different other activities. Okay, so then if, if that's the way we want it, then, and we've seen how the positive effects of, of necking it down to one lane, let's see what, what happens with that. I did, you know, for years when we were here, we talked about this. I mean, literally, we've talked about making Kimbark, we've talked about going out to, to Hoover and Pace, we've talked about all of this. And I think, I don't think this, I don't think people were against it. I think there was just not enough will there. And I think that probably is the biggest thing that we're, we're up against.
One of the things that I would just say in my observation, because you had asked about C-DOT and, and just bringing that up. In my tenure here, recently I see C-DOT bringing up grants that prioritize bikes and pets, right? And I, I don't know if that's new. It seems new to me. And so it feels like to make, even to investigate if this is the right, but to do it and to do it in conjunction with C-DOT, now is probably the time because it seems like they are, and, and who knows if, if other administrations or other, other C-DOT administrations will think that way. But right now it seems like they're more open to, and I know that from a downtown perspective, I go to those conferences and meetings as well as in Creative District, many folks are on a state highway. So it's not just us alone. And so many people are dealing with that. And as C-DOT reps come or other communities come, they are doing and they are experimenting or, or implementing these strategies that are maybe different than, than a conversation was open to previously. So it's, I think it's a great time to really start that conversation and see if we work with C-DOT.
Do we have any signs? I haven't noticed that tell where public parking is. I know in other cities, especially, I've never been there before, there will be signs that say, public parking with an arrow or, how do people know where to park?
So this year is part of that wayfinding. If you could go back a few slides, the, the first thing that we'll implement are what's called a parking ID sign. And so it'll be a large sign at every parking lot that says, this is the name of the parking lot, it's open. And then parking trailblazers that along, so if that lot's full, there'll be a sign down the street that says parking this way, kind of pointing you to the next lot. And so those are the two first things that we'll implement to make sure that system-wide, people are understanding where those choices are. Great.
Kimberly, what, how many, what are the degrees of freedom in, in terms of C-DOT? And whatever those, the degrees of freedom in terms of what we can do, because I know we've been concerned, what are those? And of all the things we've talked about from your perspective, what would be the, maybe the highest impact? And then, you know, along with high impact, the most easily implemented and to the degree that those might be the same thing or different, but a couple, on a couple of different scales. Something high impact but high cost and hard to do, that'd be interesting, interesting to know. Also, there's something that's, you know, immediately actionable, may not be as impactful, but something we could do, right? Maybe it's four-way stops, but you have a set of recommendations.
Well, first I'll say about C-DOT, I'm certainly no expert on C-DOT. I know that they are, that what we're hearing is they're more willing to talk about strategies. And we were told, you know, if they're doing it in other communities, they'll really look at it. And their grants are trending toward how do we make things more walkable? So I do think that that, I, I don't know enough about working with them on what it would be, but I, I know enough that, that they're saying, yeah, now's a great time to engage in the conversation, you know?
If I can help you on some of that. I think when we went in and we went to one lane on Main Street, if you all remember, we openly talked about this would potentially be a test case for us to look at what would the opportunity be. And so I'm teamzing feedback here. I think if you said, I think honestly, the one lane, in my opinion, probably has the most significant impact to, to safety and walkability. And I think it, and not to completely overshadow the amount of comments that you all had to deal with when we decided to, to do that. But I think if you really looked at safety and you said, what would be the, the thing to target and go after, because we're so close to when we tested it, is to start having conversations with C-DOT in terms of how do you neck it down to where you could go one way? That actually then would match potentially with the work that we're doing on Kaufman Street where we're moving the buses off of Main Street. And I think the cost of that could, I mean, it could be a varying degree as I'm looking at Jim. It could be minor adjustments into where you're just necking it down, curving or something. I mean, you'd have to work the design to where you fully build it out. And I think we could do the work, but you know, Kimberly and I have talked about this a lot and there's a lot of people that would probably string me up on my toes for saying this, but I think if you wanted to really focus on what would have the most significant impact, I think it's having that conversation and start engaging with C-DOT.
And I think if you look at, again, easy, safe and low stress, I, you know, I always come back to that because.
What are you talking about for us? Easy strength for the council? Or for pedestrians?
Yeah, yeah. Not, not for us.
There's no easy, safe, low-stress council, Johnson.
Yeah, right. But I, I, I think that what we see is people are avoiding the area because they don't feel it's easy, safe and low-stress. And so that's, you know, that's definitely an issue. When you ask about other priorities, I think I would turn it over to my board members to chime in on, you know, if they have different opinions on that.
No, it, it just feels like just listening to the conversation that there's strong alignment in regards to what the council is talking about versus supporting Vision Zero and the suggestion of the viability of going to one lane and how that aligns with our vision in, in the master plan. So I mean, this is all positive.
I always think too, those connections. So really talking about those connections and as we are building out and as we are planning for the future, really thinking first, how would a pedestrian get from here to there? Especially in things like in the steam area and then first in main transit and from the Greenway. Again, I can't speak enough to how important those connections to the Greenway are and not having to navigate kind of to Main Street and you can't be on the street, you can't be wherever or, you know, it's such a jump that, that it's, that it's a misnumber committee in downtown.
So Kimberly, thinking of the future and hopefully not that far into the future, will we, will we design downtown for ride share, for other things? We need drop-off points that are easy for people, especially people with disabilities. So some of those side streets instead of on Main Street, if we could maybe start now moving, letting the residents know this is not gonna be a place where you can park. We've already started it with the pickup, you know, the food pickup and, and I think that that's where people got used to it. They can't park there. So I, I think that we should move in that direction slowly, changing the behavior that this will be a wide share drop-off point. Because we are gonna go that way at, at some point, hopefully sooner than later.
You know, too, you, you made a lot of great points. One of the points you made earlier about the cars being parked there and having it hard to see the pedestrian at the mid-block, you know, the traffic engineer, when we at the mid-block, you know, the traffic engineer, when we met with him, had said, maybe these are no longer parking spaces, or maybe they are those drop-off and pickup, you know, right there at every mid-block. And so, I think if council wanted to look at that, or if that was a change, maybe do both things that you have suggested in that one area. It's not on the side streets, but it would help with that.
Wherever it's feasible, I'm not an engineer on this, and thank God. Marsha? Yeah. Kimberly mentioned the connections, and I think that's really important. The connections are the reason that I haven't flipped in my EVY yet, right? Now, I mean, okay, and the, and the last two weeks of snow are another reason, but, but seriously, the connections are the year-round problem for someone like me who is like a C-minus to D-plus biker. And we've got this thing that keeps getting, you know, we zoom across it, which is, we work on the pedestrian and bike adaptations when we work on that piece of the infrastructure for some other reason. And maybe we've got the tail wagging the dog a little bit. Maybe we should prioritize by the connections that are, and I understand you can't always do this, because, you know, if a water main breaks, it breaks, right? But if you prioritize by the connections that people need for the vision, instead of the other way around and saying, well, it's been seven years since we dug up the street here, so let's dug, dig up the street here and put it a bike lane, maybe we would get to the answer faster. So, I like to throw out there, does anybody else feel the same way? Do we think that the connections are the big deal?
I think, in my opinion, one of the biggest problems right now is we're not enforcing what, or, like, the speed is a great example. People are just blowing through downtown, knowing that it's 25 miles an hour, and they're going who knows how fast. And so, I think that would make an incredible difference short-term, as we kind of work through the long-term stuff, is to just enforce the speed. I think that would, you know, I rarely see a car getting pulled over in downtown. And it'd be nice every once in a while, because we're knowing we're enforcing what we, what we should be enforcing.
I had a resident say to me, "What are you doing about the people speeding downtown? I go through there five over like a nice person, and, and I, because I don't want them up my tailpipe, and they zill around me anyway." Well, I told him, "First of all, get off Main, go on Terry or something, and second, don't go five over, go five under." You know, if you want to make a difference. So, I mean, we have a big re- re-education program.
Well, same with enforcement of the dismount zone, by the way. That's difficult, and unfortunately, I do wish a public safety representative might have been here to answer some of these questions.
And just fun.
Yeah, I can jump in on some of them, too.
Back to Tim's question, does the enforcement heralds it? I, I too think that probably the single most important thing we can do is to make single lane traffic north and south of Main Street. But that's not a small undertaking. So, whatever the case may be, it's, what are the down payments on change that can be made, whether it's longer crosswalk signals or some of the other things that we've discussed? But, but we also want to acknowledge that, you know, we, you know, we go up for ideas, we allocate money to make parking more affordable, but when it comes to some of these bigger things like one-lane traffic, we understand you all get the calls, not us. So, we appreciate you all taking that heat when these kinds of things are discussed.
Well, listen, so, it's one thing to have a philosophy about transportation, and I, I don't think there are many degrees of freedom between, or much light between everything that you've shared and, you know, the conversations we've been in. But there's also the theory of action, right? You go big or go home?
Yeah.
Or do you do a bunch of little things, low cost, lower impact, as a way to start messaging? And maybe modifying behavior. If I take that and go back to Vision Zero, kind of, you know, I saw, I recall the five priorities that Phil and Jim put up on the board. Accountability, et cetera. If I were to take those, right, and put them up, and then take the things we've talked about and say, okay, let's translate those five criteria into a set of decisions, that would be an interesting exercise for me, to see how that lines up. Then the question, how big do you want to go? If I'm going to get phone calls, I'd just as soon get phone calls because we would be, my fault, I didn't get them anyway.
I think, I totally agree, and I feel like, but if go big means seven years from now, right?
I don't know, I'm not talking about seven years.
As I say, making those small changes are important. And I did want to go back to your point, Marsha, the things that you described to me are what we were talking about preparing for the future, right? And making sure that, that when these things, or even as a catalyst to get some of the needed housing that we have, or those kinds of things, and sometimes, so I think we need to look at that too, those connections, and how do we do that? I think you're right, how do we not just wait, okay, this is nine years from now, right? So, how do we look at what is, what is impactful today? Because my fear is, we do these little things here and there, and they just become car-centric, that we build first in main transit, and everyone's like, yep, I get in my car, I get on my bus, I get in my car and I go home, and they're not really using it the way we want it to be.
Well, if I recall, the five, I know they're principles, values, what would you, what would you label the, what you put up, or what did you label it at the time? This is a test, you know?
Yes, we're going to fail that.
All right, well, we'll just call it five, five principles for the moment. As I recall, one of them's accountability, you know, one of them is, you know, the right set of policy decisions. So, in, in the name of accountability, if we put that up there and said, seven years we'll get there, so then we're not serious about accountability. Let's just take that off the board, right? Because there are some things that are going to be, and I said it when we sat in here, if we're serious about those things, there are some things that are going to have to be different for our behavior, our policy decisions, our resource allocation decisions are going to have to reflect that set of principles. And if not, let's just be quiet and not try to fool somebody that we're serious about that, because we won't be, right? If we're serious about it, let's just, let's, let's lay it out and decide we're going for it. That's for me. Now, I'm a short timer here, so I'm not going to get as many phone calls as these others, but, but I'd say let's go hard.
Harold, where did all those barriers that we had out there go? Did they just kind of really go?
I think we still have them.
They were rented, they were rented. We have the white ones, we have those wider, small water-filled lots, those, those are owned by the city, but the larger ones that were to close off all of Main Street, each direction were rented.
So, I was just thinking that the ones that are, that we did have on Main Street, those are the water.
So, we could, we put the, the parklets, and then we put the water barriers in front of the parklets to, to help if somebody's, but we do have a water barrier. When we, when we did the, the first time we did this, we used the, what are they called?
Jersey barriers.
Jersey barriers, which were the concrete. So, you could, you could do different versions on that.
I was just thinking, you know, there's, there's a little bit of a run-up, but on the other hand, getting those back, get placed, might be the, the trick to, to get the, to Tim's point, go big or go home, you start putting that area out there ready again, you get the community around the idea that we're going to start doing these things, and it's going to be work in progress. These are temporary barriers and then more permanent.
I think, if I can add something to...
Shakira, you've got her hand up as well, just wanted to let you know.
Oh, Shakira, go through the air room. There you are. There I am. You all make a really good point, and I agree with, with all of you, I agree with Council Water, go big or go home. I definitely would love to have, to see downtown one lane, at least if we can get the process started or research started, to see what we need to do. But in the meantime, I believe we definitely need to make sure that we have enough time for people to walk across the street. That is a huge issue. I myself experienced that with the, the assistant, I think it's the assistant living across from Pump House, and literally was out at the pump house on the patio, and it was raining, and these senior citizens were walking across the street, and the light, I mean, a lady with a walker and her friends, and the friends left the lady with a walker. I ran out from the patio with my umbrella to walk this lady across the street because the light was changing. So, they would have had to hit both of us, because she was in the middle of the street, she was with a walker, and it was raining. So, of course, she's going to go slower. So, I think that's an immediate changes to make sure that it's consistent up and down Main Street, that people have enough time to cross the street and not be afraid. Two, I have been gone, when I, I drive across the, the different states all the time, and when I go into a main street or a downtown of a city, a small town, there's all, most of the time, there's this flashing light to tell you that the, this, the speed is about to decrease. So, is there something that we can put up as a flashing light at the beginning of the street to let people know, hey, this is about, your speed is about to decrease, so you have been warned visually, and you see that? Maybe that's something needed to start making people, I mean, we can't make anybody do anything, we know that, right? But at least being a little bit implementing those tools or those wayfindings, the flashing lights, maybe that's a little bit better for people. And there's a, that's a warning. So, of course, we don't know what all is being enforced downtown from a police standpoint, how many are out there, you know, giving warnings or violations, I'm not sure, we don't know that. But I'm all for the one lane, and definitely those little pieces of just making sure that people have enough time to cross the street, people with wheelchairs have enough time to cross the, cross the street, and visible sign or lights that flash when the, when the, the speed limit changes. So, that's what we're going to do to save.
So, I have a question for Harold. Because you mentioned earlier that we wouldn't be starting from scratch with going big, going bold, one lane, some of the work we've...
Maybe.
Potentially.
Potentially, yeah.
So, can you help us understand, where, what are the steps moving forward to pursue?
Well, one of the things I was going to say, because I think understanding the, the framework that we're working on is going to be pretty important. So, when we look at, one of the things I was going to tell council, and I've, I've got meetings coming up to, to figure out both of these issues. When we look at what's in play, two of the anchor projects that we're talking about that gets to this is actually First and Main Transit Station and the Kaufman Street Project, of which both of those are coming in once again, projected. We're going to need money for both of those. And I think generally, right now, I'm looking at the back, First and Main, we could need an additional million dollars. Kaufman Street, not the transit station, right, we're looking at another additional potential million dollars. Kaufman Street can be upwards of four to five million, based on what we're seeing, I've seen David going even more than that. So, when we look at those, those anchor projects, and to the point of what's our accountability, if those are the two core projects, then I think, you know, we're going to have to really focus funding on those two core projects to really set the stage for other things. And that's probably, it's going to entail us relooking at everything within our transportation budget. And if, you know, if that's what we want to see done, it is highly likely that we come back in and say, we're going to have to cut this amount of money off of rehab or some other section of the transportation fund in order to see this project through, because of those cost demands. So, I wanted everybody to understand that, so as we're talking about under this, know that there is a pretty big bogey out there for us financially that we're already seeing on projects that we're substantially down the road on. What we're, what they are, and I'm tangentially involved in the conversations, is we're partnering with NDC, which is the National Development Council, and they look at other funding sources. And Kimberly and I were talking about this, is how do we aggregate these and work with them to try to bring in additional funding sources, so we can look at the aggregate of what we're trying to do and fill some of these gaps? Because there's definitely going to be financial pressures on, on all of these projects. And I haven't thrown out, another project that I think is incredibly important to this that we haven't seen, is the work that Jim and his group is doing in terms of the Boston Street Crossing on the Railroad, because that's going to pull traffic off of Third, and so there's cost parameters there. You know, we're dealing with the quiet zones, and, and so, Jim?
Boston Avenue Bridge.
And, and Boston Avenue Bridge is part of Brazilian St. Brain. So, there are all of these pressures financially that we have, and I think to the point is, you know, we know we have two projects there that are foundational to everything we're talking about, but we're going to have to be reviewing these with council from a funding perspective to really figure out where we go, and/or look at how do we get increased funding for it? Of which, and Kimberly can talk about the NDC work, because it's how do we bring what we're talking about into it, but how do we look at a more holistic approach to parking in the entire area, so Kimberly, I don't know if you want to...
Yeah, I think as we were working with NDC, we, we kind of put on a map all of the things that are in the pipeline right now, and looked at what's on the pipeline and what are those missing connections and what would we need? And NDC said, as opposed to looking at, there's a parking project here, and there's another project here, another project here, maybe you look at it as one huge kind of city center project. And so, how do we look at those, put them together, and see what kind of, you know, if we wanted to do a bond, or we, or is there other funding sources out there? How can you look at it more holistically as opposed to a one-off here and a one-off there, and then you build kind of connections to nowhere? And so, I think that's the work that we would like to look at further. I did want to say some of our next steps is, we're five years into our master plan, and so, at our board retreat in February, we're really going to say, where have we been, and what have we accomplished, and what are the next steps? Part of that was this conversation, having this conversation and finding out your philosophy and, and understanding a little bit more of what council's thinking. Now, if we talk about traffic calming or a one-lane Main Street, we will go back to stakeholders. We just want to really point out that this was the first part of that conversation, and it didn't really work for us to go out and rally the troops if we didn't meet City Council's philosophies, right? So, now we'll be having, starting those stakeholder conversations and engagements, so I just want to make sure that folks know that, yes, we will be going out and having those conversations, looking at our master plan, and then looking at funding for, for these and other critical needs that address parking, that address other things, looking holistically at what we need to get to this vision of easy, safe. So, I did want to make that crystal clear, that we do want to start those conversations and work hand in hand, but wanted to make sure that the philosophy is on par.
Yeah, I, I did not get to weigh in on the first part, and, you know, I, I am in alignment with what I heard from my council colleagues, as well as what you all are, are talking about in regard to pedestrian first, ideally. So, you know, we made, my husband and I made that decision years ago, we parked at Second, and now that pipeline is getting full. We used to never do. But you just park on one end, and we just kind of work our way, and, you know, focusing on that, looking at shops that are in downtown. You know, there are clothing stores that I've not noticed before, and a lot of people have said, especially when businesses are going under, you know, oh, I didn't know that that was there. Well, no, you didn't, because you're driving. So, I, I am very much in favor of that idea of going down to one lane. I've had to commute, I live on the north side of town, having to commute to the south side to go to work. I survived, you know, we were with. You know, it's, it's not as, as convenient, but the other, the other thing that was, is very dangerous with the two, is we have people passing each other on, on Main Street. So, that's, you know, and I understand that it is a highway, it's 287, but if C-Dot is favorable of allowing us to do for that section, I, I would be in support of that. Other things that I would like to see done immediately would be those traffic lights crossing the street. I, yeah, I'm in its all or my own age.
Don't talk to me about that.
Like, it's taken me for, especially post-COVID, it takes me forever, and I never made it on time, even when I do, I'm just a slow walker.
We swear they're not changing.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, even last week I was walking on there, it changed real fast. So, and the other one... So, and the other one would be looking at where those cross, uh, midway crossing, mid-block crossing to, to look at, eliminating a lot of those barriers, whether it be car or tree. That's something that could be done pretty, pretty fast.
Yeah, it's one of the things we talk, we do have one of those flashing lights on, um,
Green.
Ninth. And, and that can be an interesting experience too. Because sometimes people don't pay attention to that. And I've seen so many, because that's on my way home. And those just aren't completely safe because I've seen a number of near misses even with those lights. And so I think you do need to clear sidelines.
Shut their tires.
Yes. Because the sidelines are going to be incredibly important to even, even things like that.
You know, most of our community believes that those, that those crosswalks, flashing lights are the answer. So if they're not, we, we need to do a better job of messaging, why not? Because the only, the only conversation I recall, there was a time early on when Tyler was still with us and we talked about that. And I, what resonates, or what I think I recall, is that somehow there was data that somebody had to indicate that those were not as safe as we thought, or it's what most people assume. If that's the case, it would be good to get us that information. Because I, I have to tell you, I got phone calls today and emails knowing that this meeting was going to occur with expectations that people have for us doing something.
I think they're.
And one of the things we keep hearing is that, is give us those crosswalks.
Harold is putting those.
Yeah, Kyle Hayworth is the new, um, traffic engineer for the city. Uh, and he is, he's, he said something really clear that I didn't pick up on earlier, but he was good to, he mentioned it's the intention to walk. So when you push the button, you're, you're telling the traffic that you intend to cross that street. And so that's, that helps everybody involved, it's a communication system.
Yeah, the, the, I think where I've seen it where the danger really comes, I think Boulder may have had this, when somebody hits it, and as soon as it starts flashing, they just go. And, you know, even at crosswalks, you know, I think where we have probably as many car head accidents as anywhere is the crosswalk between Safety and Justice and, and City Hall, I mean, of which a lot of people from S and J, you know, even there, when that block starts, I think we've all trained ourselves to really look at the people that are driving and turning. We just don't go. And I think that's part of the education pieces to say, just because it starts flashing doesn't mean you go.
Yeah, but that's still upside down. The burden of not hitting pedestrians is on the automobile.
Oh, I agree, I just.
Question.
Yeah. I, I just think that's part of it. So I think in terms of direction, you know, one of the things we were, we were talking about is, um, I think if, if Council is interested in approaching the, the one lane concept, as Kimberly talked about, a public involvement process and really overtly engaging in that because I think that's going to be necessary. And we can look at some of those other options. I think in the meantime, looking at those signs to, to put in the mid-block crossings, correct?
We're working on that with CDOT.
So that, and again, CDOT is the one that has to say yes to all of us.
Yeah, I did want to just clarify. I did not want to ever give the intention that CDOT said, yes, that was a good. I know that in these things, they're saying we're open to hearing about concepts and talking about it. So I just want to be crystal clear.
For, for the Fifth Avenue, the mid-block.
And the lights.
We have, we have put in the data for them and they've said, go ahead and put it in. And we're working on the other two crossings to get that next step going.
Should I correct the tweet that I just sent out?
Yes. Do not appear to me.
And I do think that's important is this is a state highway. It's unlike many other places. And so at the end of the day, CDOT is going to make the decision as to all of these things. And I think based on your direction, if that's where it is, I think we start conversations and work collectively with CDOT versus surprising and we're shocking them.
Well, this is a nuanced thing. If you're negotiating with CDOT and they've got all these rules that we don't see until they wave them under our nose sometimes. Um, narrow lanes are also traffic calming, I believe. And so I wouldn't want to have real absolute direction because it may be that they can't take us to one lane, but they could take, they could allow us to make our two lanes in each direction skinnier and put bike and pedestrian safety rules and, and mix and stuff like that that would have much the same effect. So can we be, you know, broad minded about this? I mean, I'm severe in a no back there and I was just making, you know, making sure that out there.
I was just saying that Harold can't seem like that. Or lanes on Main Street are already three feet narrower than the standard CDOT 12 foot line. So we're on eight, we're on eight. So we're doing that.
They've been out on the two hundred.
The two hundred block, which is there.
Right.
And just the one thing is, I also just want to encourage you to, you know, keep in mind, it's not just Main Street.
Yeah.
I mean, Kimbark, you know, Civic Center here and Seal's and some of those and the, and the parking lot to the east of Pump House, the busiest parking lot. Kimbark is equally kind of treacherous right now as Main Street.
Just like all of those.
I'm turning. Okay, thank you. So I noticed on Kaufman, we'll go on Kaufman, there are either the lights or four-way stops. I mean, it's pretty much lights going. But then on Kimbark, there are where it's just, you stop on the two going east and west. But if you're on Kimbark, and that is, that, I've tried to cross it again, slow walker, so. And so that, if that is something that we can look at doing four-way, um, stops in some of those areas, especially where there are restaurants in those areas. So there's a lot of cross-traffic.
So, okay, just one last question. I just want to reiterate that we really think of downtown as an extension of everyone's neighborhood. And we don't want this to be, we want everyone to come here and feel welcome from every neighborhood and long line. These changes are, are, are going to be helpful for every resident, every visitor. So we really just want to reiterate that we feel like downtown is an extension of everyone's neighborhood. We want everyone to come and feel comfortable. And so that's why we're here to talk about this.
I do want to bring something to your attention. During COVID, um, of course, that is why restaurants extended their restaurant out into the, and, um, the municipalities, the highway departments were agreeable to that. But now in some states, the municipalities, the, the restaurants want to keep that space because it's lucrative and it's like you said. But they are now, it's now, um, very valuable property to the city, to CDOT. They may want to rent that to you because it's property that they are losing, but that they can rent to you. And I've seen that in, in some states and some, just FYI, if we make it into a permanent, that's their real estate.
So one thing to add to that, 287 is a federal highway.
Yeah, well.
And there are requirements. We ran into it when we were, were doing the parklets and things. So how about, I believe it was, Phil brought it up, that, uh, federal highway had to have, does have issues with private businesses using that public right of way for their benefit.
Correct.
Um, one thing I will add, just so everybody is aware of it, there's about 25,000 vehicles a day running up and down Main Street. So if we add more time to the crossings, and I understand that the group consensus is that, Council's consensus is that you want to make it safer, we will do that. It will cause more congestion on Main Street. It will, there will be options that people will go elsewhere. And then narrowing those roads down, we can certainly start talking to CDOT and start laying that groundwork now. That's not an issue. We'll look at the timings, we'll look at the crossings on Kimbark as well to see if we can do anything about, about some of the crossings, about making them four-way stops if they meet our criteria. But this is, is, Kimberly made note that she just want to wait seven years. This might be a seven-year project between getting funded, getting approved, getting it permitted. And it will be expensive.
And I just, it changes, we can make instead of waiting seven years, not, you know. Yes.
But we will, we will, we will be looking at, we can certainly look at those things in the coming weeks.
So I think, so I'm clear with the Council is start exploring the idea of one lane. That's probably the biggest one for us. We're already looking at and working with CDOT on the mid-block crossing signs. But Council wanted us to look at sidelines as it relates to trees and cars, parking in, in those areas, which may mean losing some parking spots as we're looking at sidelines. And then we did talk about looking at a more holistic approach and working with NDC in terms of parking generally in the area as part of that project. Understanding that we have two key projects that are going to have funding constraints as we see them today. So looking at it in with NDC and its broader concept of parking.
We're not still concerned about enforcement, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so to give you a sense in enforcement, um, it's interesting. I got these numbers for a different reason. So I think last year we had about 157,000 calls into, um, 911. Of that 157,000 calls, 95,000 were calls that we actually dispatched police to. And to give you a sense, that's about 260 calls per day, 10 calls per hour. And then the nature of those calls depend on how we dispatch officers. Um, and as you, as Council knows, probably more than anything, uh, we went to a take-home car program this year because of recruiting and hiring police officers. And so we've been riding this wave of staffing just based on where we are right now. Um, I did send Zach a note to talk to me about it. Um, our traffic control division is, is one that, um, can get eaten up pretty fast. So if we have, um, accidents with serious bodily injuries or fatalities, which we've got a fair amount on 66 and 119, as they're investigating that and processing, we can lose our traffic control group pretty fast when we have things like that occur. And it's just compounded by the staffing issues. So I will talk to Zach about enforcement. I know I've seen them hurt a few times because it's made me check my speed. I've seen it in my, um, Lost Peak and some other areas. Uh, but, you know, when we look at that, we're also managing capacity and call volume for the entire community as well. And depending on the nature of calls, we could lose three officers immediately. You know, if you know domestic violence calls, automatically get two officer response. So if you look at what we have on the street and you get two DBs, we've lost four officers in, in the blink of an eye. And then depending on the time, but yeah, I'll talk to Zach and then we'll get more information on that.
Harold, one last thing, we'll add it to the grant list.
Okay.
And so we can, yeah. CDOT's coming out with a highway safety grant. That, our criteria is to use that street and it's a, just maybe a little more. So we'll, we'll add it to the list.
I still think we should do have those pop-up tire shredders. If anybody goes over the speed limit.
Oh, I have known that one. That's third, you should make your tires.
So in terms of my overview, did I, I don't want to miss Council's direction. Is there anything that I said in that overview that Council disagrees with?
Faster, faster, faster. I don't see. See any of them coming up? So do you have what you need?
Extra.
We need, we need a cotty group.
Yeah, yeah, so, um. We have a bunch of this, this presentation. So, second, all those papers, we can, uh.
Pollards and.